Mr. Bell Samo?
Here.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Morton?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
(coughs)
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Ms. Shergill?
Here.
Mr. Kozinski?
Here. We're going to do a flag salute and at the same time we're going to have a moment of silence for Mr. Henry, one of our outstanding teachers in the Lincoln School District who passed away at the age of ninety-eight recently and got blessed, and he was a wonderful man and a wonderful teacher. On the flag salute, on the flag salute.
(inaudible) United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Approval of minutes, please.
Make motion, sir.
Thank you. Correspondents? All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
I do not have any.
Presentations. Uh, Mr. Carnesella? You have two presentations to turn.
Spencer Savings.
Yep, yep, yep. We have Spencer Savings, we have Rula here tonight. They're making the donation to the Nutley Educational Foundation. And it is for the robotics program in the amount of a thousand dollars.
Hi, everyone. Greetings from Spencer Savings Bank. Spencer Savings, is that the right word? Spencer Savings Bank has, um, has long been a supporter of student and supplemental education efforts in the community it serves. Within this, I mean, this in mind, uh, we are honored actually to present this check of a thousand dollars to the Nutley Educational Foundation in support of the recently established robotics program in the Nutley High School District.
To the Educational Foundation, I noticed some very hardworking people here that deserved this credit along with Spencer Savings. So the Educational Foundation group, move forward, please.
Where's everybody?
Mr. Henry, does that one of your program that you're going to work with? Why don't you start your ear off right?
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to really, uh, thanks Spencer Savings and certainly the Nutley Educational Foundation, um, for the work that you're doing and the work that I know you have on your plate. And congratulations to you and thank you to our children that you're going to be helping. Right now, we are going to have Dr. Haber come forward for a presentation, a demagoguery presentation on, um, the status of our growth in Nutley. We're going to take that microphone right here. Dr. Haber, you can, you can go wherever you are comfortable to make your presentation.
My feeling might feel like good.
Dr. Haber is going to make a presentation tonight on the, uh, on the status of our growth in Nutley as far as children is concerned. We will entertain questions concerning Dr. Haber's report after his report.
Alright. Okay, uh, what I intend to do tonight is provide you with, first of all, good evening, everybody. Okay. Uh, what I intend to do tonight is provide you with an overview of the study that I've been doing for the district since last spring. The, I'll try to keep the detail and the boring stats as little as possible, but hopefully it'll generate some questions and establish some understandings as to what's going on here with the enrollment and the population of Nutley. May I have the first? Guiding the study with several key questions. You may have some more questions after, but these are the questions that I was looking at in the course of the study. First of all, is the district enrollment showing growth? That's the primary question. Does the district currently have the capacity to accommodate this growth? In other words, can the schools handle any future growth that might be coming into the school district? Uh, can the district maintain its current class sizes at the elementary level as a K-six organization? Remember, the current structure of this district is kindergarten through sixth grade. Walker is a seven, eight school, a high school nine through twelve. So the question is, given the current facilities, given the current or future enrollment, can class sizes be maintained at a good quality level over the next few years? Can the district offer support services currently, offer support services currently and in the future based upon the current organizational structure? Meaning that beyond normal classroom instruction, things are done in this district like special education, like, uh, like occupational therapy, like speech therapy, and all sorts of different kinds of support programs that do require space. So beyond normal classroom space, there's other space in each building that's really needed. Can redistricting solve, uh, solve the room availability, availability, availability issues at the elementary schools? In other words, can looking at the current, in, current tenant zones and tweaking or changing them resolve problems that may be existing in terms of utilization of the facilities? And finally, does creating a grade six, eight middle school relieve the room issues at the elementary schools? In other words, changing the elementary school structure to a K to five and creating a middle school at Walker in grade six to eight? Okay. While we're looking, what the board asked me to do, and it was a smart thing to do, is take a look, not at the normal five-year projection, which is usually what the state of New Jersey requires of a school district, but to go out further, go out ten years to see that if anything is done, can it be sustainable over that period of time? So looking at key, key figures, in the two thousand ten-eleven school year, uh, there were three thousand nine hundred and twenty students enrolled in this district. Uh, the, the enrollment went up to about four thousand and fifty-one, uh, for this year. Now, those numbers are not quite official yet because we take our numbers based upon the October fifteenth enrollment, but they shouldn't fluctuate very, very far from that. Five years out, we're looking at the district going up to about four thousand two hundred and seventy-five, and then ten years out, going up to about four thousand five hundred and thirty. So if I give you the next slide, I'll kind of translate. Okay. So in a K-six organization, what we're looking at is change of about, of the change from two thousand ten-eleven uh, to the current, through two thousand sixteen-seventeen on the elementary school level was a hundred and twenty-one. Uh, that represented a four point, well, a hundred and twenty-one. Going to twenty-one, twenty-two, we're looking at a growth of about three hundred and twenty-three students at the elementary school level, and then going out to two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, about four hundred and sixty-one elementary school, uh, students. So that's, that's a large number. On the element, on the middle school level or the seven, eight level, we're looking at a growth of thirty-one over the past five years, only forty-one over the next, over the future five years, and then ninety-six. But keep in mind that most of the enrollment that's come in recently that's caused this large, large jump in enrollment, uh, population or enrollment is at a younger level. So those kids are going to start to filter through into secondary schools later on in the projection. So they'll come, they'll come in affecting the high schools and the middle schools a little bit later than the elementary schools. Okay, next slide, please? So here are some frequently asked questions regarding enrollment in Nutley. The first, what's causing the growth? Well, the answer is the growth is being generated primarily from the sale of existing housing stock in Nutley. In two thousand fifteen, in the whole year, there were two hundred and eighty-six single-family homes sold in Nutley. Through the end of August two thousand sixteen, there were a hundred and thirty homes sold, and as of September two thousand sixteen, there are a hundred and sixteen single-family homes. So the, the market for homes has been very active in this, in this community over the last few years. Now, next question, where are the homes being bought? Well, it appears that the housing sales are fairly evenly spread over the entire district. Now, I'm talking about single-family homes, so there's also some population add from, from multiple-family housing, from apartments that come into the district. Another question that came up, is this growth only a bubble which will level out as students pass through the system? And the answer to that is no. The trends to all the grades show growth. In doing these, in doing these projections, I looked at anomalous numbers. Sometimes you'll come, the way, the way these projections work, it's called a cohort survival projection, and what you do is you take the history of enrollment as kids move from grade to grade. So for example, in two thousand and eleven, there were a hundred kids in first grade, and when they became second grade, that was a hundred and ten kids. That means that was a ten percent growth level. So that's, and then you do that for a period of six years to come up with a five-year migration ratio, which causes the multiplier to project that. What I'm very careful to do is that, let's say you've got one year, one grade that really causes a big number. So for example, there was one grade level, I'm not sure, I don't remember if it's the top of my head, but it was a one point one, it was an eighteen percent jump, when every other grade, every other grade level in that year and around it was about a two or three percent jump. So what I did was, I eliminated the high and low from that particular grade level so that nothing skewed the enrollment. Uh, there weren't a lot of them, but they were removed, so that guarded against any particular bubble causing any one grade level. The key is that the projections are even growth and, and they're linear. There's straight line up as you sort in that, in that first graph. Next one, please? Okay. Another question that always comes up, why is it in the past with a higher enrollment, the schools are not considered at capacity or considered overgrad or was there a lack of classrooms? Well, the, the simple, the answer to that is that we all know, and this is not a bad thing because old, old school buildings are really nice, but the buildings in this district are quite old. When they were built, they were built to have to seat K through six kids, general education classes, and that was it. Over the years, as these buildings remain stable, they actually shrunk. Not physically shrunk, but they shrunk in utilization. For example, if you need a special needs room for autistic kids, you can only have six children in that class. However, you need a seven hundred and fifty or an eight hundred and fifty square foot classroom. So now you've reduced that building by one full classroom. Over the years, many, many, many other requirements have come into the district that are mandated not only by the state but the federal government. And as I said, these mandates include such things as special ed, special education, physical and occupational therapy, speech services, and many, many other kinds of programs that are not optional. And as I said, each of these require their own classrooms, and each of these programs, many of them have limited class sizes. Some are limited to six, some are limited to twelve, some are limited to fifteen. So again, these are fewer kids taking up classrooms, uh, physical classrooms, thus reducing the actual ability for the school district to handle all the kids in a particular building. And so, and I, I don't want for me to think that, that these, your, your class sizes are busting out and that things are crazy. They're really not. The principals are handling this, this very, very well. There's a place, a safe and a healthy program of, of placement for every kid in this, in this district. The problem is that you really, 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 as far as you can go in terms of where programs exist. Another question that comes up, can portable classrooms be used to make up for space deficiencies? Space deficiencies like we have in Washington and Yannacor? And the answer is that portable classrooms are only meant for short-term and, or temporary situations. They're not meant to be long-term solutions. They're not meant to be more than just a few years until a physical solution can be, a true solution to become, to be brought to the district, whether it's renovation of a building, whether it's creation of a new building, whatever, okay? Uh, the other question I have, I, I, this is my second full enrollment study, and the same question was two years ago, three years ago, it's now. Uh, what, do we know how the hot and the roach properties are going to affect the district? And the answer is, as of now, there's really no answer. Speculation, there's talk, there's rumor, there's a lot of things, but there really is no answer. And I did, we did have the good fortune of meeting with the, um, with commissioners last week, and it was a question I was asking, again, no solid, really good answer. It's just that there isn't one. That's, good, next, next question, next one? Okay, can redistricting resolve the space issues at the current K-six schools? And the answer is that in order to use redistricting as a method of solving a space problem, you've got to have a place, pull kids out of one school, have a place to put them in another school. So you have to have room to do it. There just isn't room here. So all we, all we'd be doing is making a big circle, because there's, you know, if you look at the attendant zones of the schools, uh, you can see, you can move kids in a circular manner, but there's no place to really put them. So you're replacing one problem with another problem. So, uh, redistricting, uh, as a short-term solution, really doesn't have a place or really can't work. And if they're looking at this thing for a very long time and looking at the numbers over and over, it seems to me that the best long-term solution for this district is to make, uh, is to create a K-five, a K-five, uh, elementary school level and create a middle school at Walker. Now, the question is, if we did that, how many classrooms would be saved in the elementary schools by the creation of a six, eight middle school? And the answer is that the projections show that up to seventeen general education classrooms plus additional support rooms would be needed at Walker. This would open up seventeen general education classrooms at the elementary schools and potentially would open additional space by reducing some group demands by the departure of the sixth grade. So we would gain, the district would actually gain seventeen full-size classrooms because that's the amount, that's the, the, is the future projection of how many sixth-grade sections are going to be needed over the next, really fifteen to twenty years. And the question's, how sustainable will this change be for the district? And the answer, while there are no guarantees that this will last forever, the trend shows that this can carry, this can be carried ten, twenty, even twenty-five years into the future. Anything that's done here can be done, or will be a long-term solution, certainly on the elementary school levels. It seems that gaining those seventeen classrooms will be the solution that's needed at the elementary school levels. And let's go to the next slide, and what about the high school? In the short term, over the next five years, the high school's going to rate relatively stable. However, over a period of, um, over a period of time, the high school is going to grow by a hundred to a hundred and fifty students. And there also is some consideration for looking at different options for schedule one high school students, which will require some changes and renovations at the high school. Next slide, please? I just, just so you, you can get a feel of what the enrollment looks like in the district, physical look at it, these are, the, the black dots represent all the K-six students in the district. And as you can see, there's no particularly large dense area, that the dots are pretty evenly spread throughout the district, and the, the attendant zones pretty well reflect the nature of each of the neighborhoods. So what was, so in the event of looking at, in looking at possibilities for redistricting, I was able to actually physically look at different parts of the community and say, if we move this over here, what would this mean? If we move this over here? And absolutely none of it worked. Okay, so again, it's not something I can comfortably recommend because it doesn't really work with solution. Um, next slide, please? Okay. So now I want to look at the projected utilization on the elementary level. And what I did in doing this, I had these three, these three guidelines, that class sizes do not exceed twenty-five, okay? That doesn't mean that every class is at twenty-five. That means that twenty-five would be the limit that I would say we need to break and go to another section. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at the characterization of classrooms and not exceeding twenty-five, okay? Number two, all buildings will have a dedicated art room. So I'm not looking at art rooms or rooms of that nature, or for that matter, music rooms, saying, well, we can recover a room by putting art on a cart or putting music on a cart. Um, for those of you who don't know, didn't, in my last presentation, my own background is I'm an educator, I'm not a statistician, I was a high school principal for fifteen years, and so, and I was a teacher for a lot longer before that. So when I look at these things, I look at educational benefits to children, which is why I'm a big proponent of the middle school, and why I also believe that you don't take, you don't take programs away from kids, and I think enrichment purposes is important. So these were not, in any of my room counts, art rooms and music rooms were not counted. Next slide, please? Okay, so let's take a look. Okay. What we're looking at in Lincoln is that we're looking at the total number of rooms that are available, total full-size classrooms, the total number of kindergarten classrooms, uh, that exist, the total number of general education grade one through six. Lincoln does have, have the largest special needs population in the district, and there are six dedicated classrooms to that, along with three dedicated resource rooms. Uh, and there's also a, a strategy. So the total used in that, in that building is thirty-one. And the average class size across the board is twenty, but that doesn't mean that, that means it's an average class size. There are some at nineteen, there are some at eighteen, there are some at twenty-four, there are some at twenty-five. That's an average. And remember, that fluctuates year to year because class break, which doesn't happen evenly, you can have in a school twenty-six, you know, you know, three, sixth-grade sections of sixty kids, which would be twenty. You can have seventy-five kids in the fifth grade, three sections, which would be twenty-five. So that's how it works. As you see, the, um, in the, up, up to twenty-twenty-one, the building is fully utilized. And I, and I want to explain something about in a minute. When we get to twenty-two, twenty-three, it's actually, given, if, given the projections, it has a shortfall of one classroom. Now, I put, uh, this, this little, okay, so if we move the sixth grade out of Lincoln, we'll pick up three classrooms, that's going to allow for the location of support programs, which are now in substandard spaces, and I didn't correct this, uh, that. Substandard doesn't mean there's anything wrong with it, it just means it's smaller than the federally or state mandated size. So there are classes being placed in rooms that really, really need to be larger. For example, a physical therapy room should have more room for equipment and things like that. By doing this, picking up three classrooms, the principals have more space in order to offer these programs. And zero is very tight, there are no options. And keep in mind, if there are some classes that have, that, if there are some grades that are at capacity, so for example, let's say your third grade has seventy-five kids, and when they became fourth grade, it's eighty kids. Well, you have two options, create another section to go four of twenty, or if you don't have the room, divide that eighty by three to now increase your class sizes over the twenty-five limit. So it's important that there's, to look at this with absolutely no flexibility for the principal, very tight spaces, and other little things that come up, things like storage become problems. And believe me, anybody here who works in elementary school knows, storage is a major issue. Next slide, please? Radcliffe. Radcliffe, as you can see, for the first three years of the projection, is at capacity. As we move out, there's a shortfall of two classrooms for over the next three years. Okay, I didn't take this out ten years. But there'll be, that would, that should increase somewhat over the next, over the next ten years. As I said, um, Radcliffe has no additional space. Beginning in twenty-twenty-one, it'll have a shortfall of, of two classrooms. In addition, there are two self-contained special education classrooms and one reset, resource room that are being held in small rooms, in rooms that really, they need to be in larger rooms. A, a K-five organizational structure will open up two to three additional classrooms in Radcliffe. Two to three because it's a little foggy as you go out, but it's at least two and probably three additional classrooms. Next, please? Spring Garden. Spring Garden does have a little bit of flexibility in three of its years, um, but it, and it will pick up two additional classrooms if sixth graders move to Walker. This frees up space for support services, which are currently being held in some cases in substandard or smaller classrooms. Now, keep in mind, if you can open up classrooms in a building like Spring Garden, it may relieve us, it may relieve one or two programs out of another school. So for example, Lincoln, with six special needs programs, might be able to move a special needs program, a district-wide special needs program, Spring Garden. I'm not suggesting that's what would happen, but it gives you much greater flexibility when you pick up additional classroom space. Next, please? Okay, Washington. Washington currently has, uh, has the four, the four trailers or the four modulators outside. Beginning next year, given the class sizes as we want them, want them to be, there's going to be a shortfall of one, as you can see going out, that shortfall gets even bigger as that school grows. And again, as I said, the, um, the, uh, the notion of, the notion of going to a sixth-grade classroom would help them a lot, because I believe, and I can put down here, that Washington will pick up at least four classrooms if you go to a K-five organization. And finally, Yannacor? Uh, there is. Okay, Yannacor has a little flexibility this year, um, but as you can see, going through the years, that flexibility is going to go away. And keep in mind that one of the questions that came up, hasn't the enrollment been leveled in, in Nutley? And the answer to the question is yes, it has been, it's not going to be, it's going to go up, but it's been leveled at a high level and, and at capacity. It's been leveled at, at the, you know, without a degree of flexibility there. The numbers are high for the ability of the, of the schools to handle it. Next? Okay, so some conclusions. The enrollment in the Nutley public schools will show significant growth during the next ten years. The initial growth will be primarily in the elementary schools and filter up through the secondary schools later on. Uh, the current K-six organization cannot accommodate the projected growth, at least in terms of maintaining head sizes. Uh, redistricting, can provide only limited and short-term relief and is not a recommended solution. Under a K-five organizational structure, the elementary schools will pick up at least seventeen classrooms based upon future projections for sixth grades. Uh, the K-five organizational structure will maintain the current neighborhood sending districts with no redistricting anticipated. And of course, Walker Middle School will need considerable renovations and expansion to accommodate the sixth grade. And I believe that's the presentation.
Before we start the conversations on air, appreciate everyone's input, okay? Questions will be directed to me concerning Dr. Haber. That's what we are discussing tonight, the, the amount of children and the, the growth in our school district. For everyone to information beyond that, after tonight's conversation with the board, we will then be meeting with our architect, we will be meeting as a board to start laying out the agenda on where we are going with our expansion of the schools, whatever we plan. But tonight's questions are based to Dr. Haber's roommate about the population growth in Nutley. I would appreciate you keeping to that. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. President, I was confused by the slides for Washington and Yannacor. The notice says this includes the modular classrooms, and there show deficits in the future. As I say, in Yannacor, it was a deficit of two classrooms. That's with the four?
Yeah. Yes.
So with, with, I'm sorry, with, with the sixth grade moving out of Washington and Yannacor, what will, will they gain room space?
They'll gain, they'll gain, well, what they'll gain, both gain between four and five classrooms. Because this counted the modules. The root towers counted the modules.
That's what, you might be going, so even if we move the sixth grade out of Washington and Yannacor, we're still going to need the trailers outside?
No, no, that eliminate the trailers. That's where the sixth grade is.
But it didn't, it didn't, it didn't clearly explain how many classrooms we would pick up if we move the sixth grade out of Washington.
But that, how many?
Maybe I missed it.
We would pick, okay, my bad, I didn't put, I, I didn't put the number in there.
Like in other schools, it was clearly we would pick up so many classrooms.
You're going to pick up four at Washington and four at Yannacor. Because the, okay, I get the confusion, okay? The modules will go, okay? The modules will go. They'll be, I'm not, I'm going to have to go back to, that's, you might be on that, okay? The modules are gone, that's, that's the main thing. And I think that, um... Okay, the modules go, and both schools will pick up two additional classrooms.
Okay, so based on the numbers you showed tonight, and I, and I don't want to quote you, but you're saying to me that at Washington and Yannacor, your projection would show both modules at Washington and both modules at Yannacor going, and both schools picking up two classrooms if the sixth grades come out of Washington and Yannacor?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
I'm not saying that. Okay, that clears it up for me. I'll, Mr. Thomas also.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
I think based on the question, I should put that up there.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, just along with that, how long would that sustain? So we pick up two extra classrooms at Yannacor and at Washington, how long would we sustain in the timeline?
Well, I believe looking at the projections and looking at the numbers, the, if you, if, and I'm going to do a much more detailed report for the board, there's flexibility in terms of...
There's flexibility in terms of, in terms of percentages of growth. So for example, if there are sixty-three children in the sixth, in the fifth grade, okay? So, and I'm using three sections, okay? I have to seventy-five, right, to maintain the three sections. So that's, so I'm looking at a, I'm looking at probably a ten, somewhere between a ten and twenty-year sustainability. And you know, in that period of time, that's a very long period of time. It's why the state usually doesn't accept more than five-year projections, but I think for the plans of this district, it's incredibly important that you look at sustainability.
Yes, Ms. Lang?
Uh, Mr. Haber just said he would be giving a much more detailed report to the board. When will that report be given to the board and will be, the public be invited?
I don't think he said that.
What? Yes, he did.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What, you're going to give another report to?
Well, I'm going to be giving the detailed, you know, all the nuts and bolts, all the charts, the tables. And keep in mind, also, which will be, if anybody saw, I did a report in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, it'll be a report similar to that, okay? Which will be, which will be the final report that I hand to the board.
So my question again is, the detailed report that he will be giving to the board, including charts, graphs, details, et cetera, will the public, the taxpayers, the parents be invited to the meeting where the detailed report is given? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. And what was the total taxpayer dollar that was paid for Mr. Haber's expertise?
Ten thousand dollars, I think.
How much, sir?
Ten, ten thousand dollars, something. I think that is, I think, I'm pretty sure. I don't have the...
You don't know?
Time out, time out, time out. We, we will get you an official answer so there's no misunderstanding of what the payment was.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd also like to know, Mr. Haber stated that portables are not a long-term solution. Could you tell me what year the first trailers were put at Washington?
This year, Dave.
Okay, and what was the first year any trailers were put in the Nutley School District? Excuse me?
And we're trying to figure out...
Before you were there? All right, and you're not responsible, Mr. Smith.
No, no, we're just trying to come up with a...
Nineteen ninety-eight. We're not sure what the date was.
In nineteen ninety-eight, we put short-term solution, trailer?
Time out, time out, time out.
Wait, I'm speaking, sir.
No, I'm speaking, okay? That might not be the correct answer, so I don't want you to quote right there.
Okay, were you here in nineteen ninety-eight, sir?
I heard it from a citizen in the audience. That person was not...
I am a citizen.
Ms. Lang?
Were you here in nineteen ninety-eight, sir? Were you on the board?
Please be quiet for one second.
Be quiet? Are you telling me to be quiet, sir?
I said for one second.
Okay.
I do not want you to get the wrong information. I am not...
Well, I'm looking to you for the correct information.
And I don't have that.
You don't?
When I have the correct information of when the first trailers were put at Yannacor School, I will give them to you.
Does anybody here know?
I don't trust anyone here except...
You don't trust anyone here, the citizens?
Will you, will you stop putting words in my mouth?
You just said you don't trust.
When it comes, if you let me finish, when it comes to when the trailer was put at Yannacor School, I don't know if anyone knows except our business administrator who paid to have the trailers put there.
Does our business administrator know, Mr. Evans?
When I get the correct answer, I will give it to you in the public. I don't know a hint. I don't want you to be...
Okay, and when can I, when can I expect that answer, sir, respectfully?
Respectfully, tomorrow, nine fifteen.
Thank you. By email or are you going to call?
I'm, I'm not going to call you. By email.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm reading from the report you did in twenty fourteen, sir. And it states, "In our opinion, at this time, Yannacor could not absorb any of the students from any new construction. The cohort projection for Yannacor, projection not including new housing, shows significant growth for the next five years. I attended the Board of Ed meeting on Tuesday where the Municipal Alliance Committee met in closed session with the Board of Commissioners of Nutley. And, um, the reason for the meeting, as I understand it, was, uh, potential property acquisition, okay? The, um, details of the property acquisition were not given, except that it was not the Franklin Avenue property. My concern as a homeowner is that Mr. Haber's report just said that seventeen new classrooms is what is being recommended on Franklin Avenue. I don't know if you read the report this week, the police report, but a student was hit on Franklin Avenue leaving school, okay? Also in the police report, we have a significant increase in crime on Franklin Avenue. I am here respectfully asking that this board look at for the safety of our children, okay? That Franklin Avenue, putting seventeen additional classrooms on Franklin Avenue where we have traffic issues, where we have crime issues, may not be the best solution right now. Mr. Haber said that we don't know the impact of rape. Mr. Haber, in his ten thousand dollar study, is making his professional recommendation that we not redistrict. I am asking you, as a Nutley homeowner, as a person who cares deeply about the children and about the education system here, that we rethink that maybe Franklin Ave and putting seventeen classrooms there may not be the best solution. I also ask that the Municipal Alliance Committee of the Board of Ed, those people who go and speak to our commissioners, also include citizens other than Board of Ed members. Because I would like to know right now, who on the Municipal Alliance Committee of the Board of Education is a parent? Any parents on the Municipal Alliance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and who would they be?
Is that, is that, what's the relevance of the question?
I would like to know if there are any parents on the Municipal Alliance Committee?
Yes.
And who are they?
I, I'm not going to give you the names, but there are three members of that Municipal Alliance Committee that are parents or grandparents.
Parents or grandparents?
Grandparents or parents.
Okay, are there any business, Nutley business owners who are on the Municipal Alliance Committee?
On the Nutley Municipal Alliance Committee, yes.
And who would they be?
Again, I, I don't really care to give you the names, I don't think I have...
You don't care to tell me who is on the Municipal Alliance Committee who is a visitor?
This is what you know.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Anyone else listening to this here this night concerning Mr. Haber's report? Mr. Haber, go ahead.
No, I just, I want to thank everybody for their attention and courtesy. And, uh, one of the things, keep in mind, is I'm still waiting for the official enrollment from the state, so that's what, the report will be done when I get those numbers.
And when you do have that, we will receive it and the commissioners, I understand, will receive this final report when you do have all those numbers.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And thank you. And I'm going to send you revision, how many you want to put on the district website, okay?
And so, thank you, Dr. Haber. I, I do appreciate your thoughtful analysis. I'm not sure that everybody here really appreciates the fact that, um, even before I was hired, I've been talking with Mr. Laszlo, this is, your analysis has been going on for months and your data collection has been going on for months. And we do appreciate that, that thoughtful care that you put into that. And I would have to echo what Mr. Kaczynski said, now that we do have a definitive report and a fairly clear understanding, notwithstanding the October number, of what the population growth is and the fact that it is not a bubble, um, we do need to move forward with determining our options. We do have to engage as a community together and investigate the needs and look at the concepts for meeting or exceeding, uh, those needs so that we can make plans for the future as a community. And, and I'm going to echo again what Mr. Kaczynski said. As a community, your input is valuable, invaluable. And I and the Board of Education, our town government, are going to look forward to hosting a series of meetings and town halls designed specifically to make sure that we're providing the very best education available to our students and at the same time doing everything possible to be visibly responsible. Don't think for a minute that we ever forget that that is part of the equation when we're having these conversations. And I would say in the words of our esteemed Board of Education President, we look forward to these meetings being scheduled very soon. I want to obvias, Dr. Haber?
Just one second.
My neighbor. Good night. You get some peace. Run home. Run, ladies and gentlemen. I also wanted to share with you that the individual student reports for the park, for the New Jersey Science for grades four and eight, the end of course biology, um, also including all the student scores are being mailed to the community. They'll go together. If your child has multiple score reports, they will get those multiple, um, reports together with individual letters and, um, details of what those mean. I will be, um, giving a report at the October twenty-fourth Board of Education meeting detailing Nutley's results as compared to the state and as compared to last year's results. And at that time, we'll also have the opportunity to look at the district goals, the first three student achievement goals that were tied to some of those metrics and determine how we did, um, in accomplishing those goals. In other news, the best part of my news, we've had a great first few weeks of school. The open houses, the first football games, band breakfast, pep rally, even at our first proposal, and I will tell you that she said yes. So it's a, it's a great start to the year. I'm really excited for everything, um, that's coming, even the scary things I'm excited for. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. James.
We are currently working along with the architects to get the completion of Spring Garden and the Nutley High School security entrance projects done. We expect the stairs of Spring Garden to hopefully be completed in the next ten days, provided that we have good weather. And the high school project will be starting this weekend. We have an upcoming security meeting internally in district to identify our communication needs, the Washington School main entrance, making that secure, and also to see if there are any additional needs for cameras throughout the district. So we are trying to keep on top of all the security measures as well. Our auditors have been in district. They've been in full swing. Mrs. Kapuza and Mr. Remora have been bombarding with their questions and requests and providing them with all the details, and hopefully they will be finished with their onsite audit this Friday. And we are also in the midst of our fixed asset inventory updates. That's currently taking place and probably will be completed over the next couple of weeks as they go from building to building. Not only do we do the fixed assets, but we also have them actively do an update of our technology inventory, especially in light of the fact that the board has made such a huge investment in technology over the last couple of years. We want to make sure that we have a good handle on all of our equipment and where it is located.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Tonight, um, we're starting a tradition, we're bringing back a tradition that we had before. We now have with us a student representative. Her name is Katharina Wilblyx. With us, you've come highly recommended from, uh, Mr. Williams. And, um, Mr. Scolera and I were fortunate enough to work with your father way back in the, uh, younger days. And, um, he was a gentleman and I am looking forward to the reports.
Thank you.
If you have something to say tonight, you started us off.
Yeah, uh, so first week of school, we're very busy in terms of student activities. Student Council hosted its first meeting and successfully held a pep rally, uh, last Friday. So it was very fun, brought a lot of school spirit. Um, in the future, we have, October second is School Pride Day at the farmer's market, so come and check it out. Um, we are also considering holding a homecoming dance to further raise school spirit. And right now, we are doing Ronald McDonald fundraiser. The senior class will hold senior coos on October seventh. Uh, freshmen just had speeches today for elections. Key Club is, has already held two meetings and is going to Six Flags on October, uh, nine for the fall rally. Uh, we have a club fair coming up as well as a college and career fair, September twenty-nine, that's seven, where our guidance counselors and our principals will be holding mini-sessions talking about AP exams, SATs, and, uh, college, uh, college paths. Robotics Club has had their first meetings. Um, it's very exciting. I'm actually part of the team. Uh, we're very fortunate to be able to, um, go on to competitions and, uh, that's pretty much where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. Ms. Sherman.
The academic committee met on September twentieth. Mr. Will brought us with a presentation on the revisions for K through twelve social studies curriculum. This is year three of the program review and program revisions process. Last year, we piloted draft curriculum and created new courses. This year, we're implementing those changes. Additionally, the committee reviewed proposed district field chips, requested professional learning, and trial reimbursement expenditure around the agenda tonight for approval. We also reviewed our current scheduled presentations for the year, and, um, both the committee and Dr. Glazer will continue to review that schedule of presentations. And that was basically the summary of what we discussed.
Pardon? Mr. Cornso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the administration committee met on September nineteenth. Uh, Mr. Prior gave us an update on the athletics program so far this year, reviewed several needs of the program, including a NBA system for the oval and a new sound system in the gym, uh, planning needs to begin for the updates of the turf field at the oval. Uh, October seventh, there's a beefsteak fundraiser for the third half club at the Parks Recreation Building, money raised support scholarships for the athletes. Homecoming is Saturday, October eighth. Dr. Glazer is our grand marshal. Uh, Dr. Glazer reviewed several legal items with us, shared the interview process for the directors of curriculum positions that are being recommended on the BOE agenda this evening, uh, and quite an update on her entry, uh, planning process. The committee recommended changing the BOE, the BOE meeting date for October, from October seventeen to October twenty-fourth, uh, due to conflicts with Columbus Day, the Jewish holidays, and the need to facilitate our, our scheduled BOE, uh, committee meetings. The next meeting of the administrative committee will take place Monday, October seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, and we might be changing that date because I know that we had a couple of conflicts with, uh, Mr. Scolera. So we're going to try to pick out a different date, so that'll be revised.
Thank you, Mr. Cornso. Mr. Farah.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on September twentieth. Mr. McNichols has provided the committee with, uh, an update on the high school locker refurbishment project, the Washington School stuff repairs, the modular classroom, the rural school chiller, as well as the maintenance work orders that are ongoing. The committee reviewed the high school classroom locker replacement project and the replacement of the compressor at the high school. The committee also discussed the high school, the Spring Garden, security entrance projects with the architects, specifically timelines for completion, delays and changewars. Mrs. James and Mr. Remora presented the September twenty-seventh finance resolutions, which included budget transfers and use of facilities. We also presented the status of the term budget. The committee also discussed the bus lap, property acquisition, upcoming negotiations, and electrical billing for PSE and G, and our next meeting is scheduled for October eighteen.
Thank you. Any other committee report? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board resolution number six oh one allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try and stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on this topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Kapuza before you take the microphone. Anyone wishing to be heard now is the time on resolution items. If not, Ms. Sherman, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Mr. President, I move academic resolutions one and two.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bassama?
Yes.
Mr. Farmcel?
Yes.
Mrs. Doncheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Corra?
Yes.
Mr. Kline?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, online, and on number two specifically to myself.
I am paying on number two specifically to myself.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Cornes, will you take administration resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move administration resolutions one through two as ready.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Belsama?
Yes.
Mr. Cornes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Ferraro, will you take finance resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the finance resolutions one, two, and nine as ready.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Belsama?
Yes.
Mr. Cornes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Klein, will you take personnel resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President, I move resolution one, including the amendment of two director positions. The first, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for grades pre-K to five. And the second, the appointment of Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for grades six through twelve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Belsama?
Yes.
Mr. Cornes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Dr. Glazer.
It is my great, great pleasure to introduce you. Actually, I think we have our whole, whole team in place at this point. So if you would, Ms. Jeanne Vokonso, so we're going to get it right, please rise. Jeanne is going to be our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for grades pre-K to five. We'll look forward to telling you all about her background, joining us in the district. Thank you and welcome very much. This time, I'd like to introduce you to your new Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for grades six to 12, Mr. Kent Ben. And since you're here and a member of our team, we have Karen Greco with us tonight, who's our Director of Communications and starting already next week. I just want to thank our principal team for being here tonight in support of the presentations and the new team.
Yes, and I want to applaud you for your, for your choices. I think that our children are going to greatly benefit from the staff we bring forward.
Thank you.
Any other board members that want to make a comment about that? In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. Anyone wishing to be heard on any school-related matters now is the time. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters in exemplary public discussion pursuant to NJESA 102, if they have followed, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed and closed executive session at this time to discuss personnel, contracts, and property acquisitions. Be it further resolved that the results of this discussion have been made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, nor when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.